I'd like to welcome everyone to our June 11, 2024, regular council meeting. Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Yell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Consent agenda, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda this evening is approval of operations support specialist job description, resolution adopting the FY 25 to 29 capital improvement plan, project Copper Ridge, uncollectible utility account write-offs, treasures reports, and minutes of previous meetings.
Is this the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. 9.03 A2, Orders Amending Chapter 4 of Virginia Property Maintenance Code. Andrew.
Mr. Mayor, public forum.
Oh, Lord, my fault. Wrong sheet. All right. Let's try this again. 7.01, Public Forum. The public forum is an opportunity for town citizens, visitors, and group to speak or bring in, to bring our attention to any government-related item. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Groups are requested to have a spokesperson. Does there anyone who would like to speak this evening? Come on up. Mike? Three minutes only.
Hey, how y'all doing? My name is Joel Beckett. I live over here in Mountain Brook Estates on Electric Avenue there. I'm here with a group of us, 12 of us. I have a petition of 58 people on here in our neighborhood about the generator noise. I've got three things here: generator noise, the speed in our neighborhood since it's town-owned roads and maintained, and doing something with the speed, speed bump, speed hump, something. First, we'll start with the generators. I went to the meeting on May 29th with the same people, the Light and Power Committee meeting, to try to push for this noise study to be done. They got the prices for it, $6100. They kind of raised their nose at it, it seemed like. No one wants to do it. We're here to try to get something done with this noise. We come home, the noise is extremely loud. It hurts our kids' ears. They don't want to play outside. That's very sad. We pay all this money to live here in a nice community. We should be able to get this taken care of. There's no noise standards conveniently in the town, and you guys say the generators is an emergency BS stuff. The OSHA standards on that is 85 decibels or higher is life-threatening. You know, you can become deaf from it, and it affects kids, and they're really different, which we all have in there. Through the OSHA app through there, when that thing's running, it's anywhere from 98 to 105 decibels. It runs all the time. It can run once a day for six hours. It can run in the morning. A couple weeks ago, it ran in the morning for like three hours, and it ran in the evening for seven hours. It just runs whenever, and we're just tired of it, and we want something done about it. So we're trying to push for that. In there, in the meeting in May 29th, they were talking about, you know, the $6100 study that no one really wanted to do for whatever reason. We're here to demand for that, to get that done, to see what kind of resolutions we can get done for that. There's a guy in our neighborhood that works on these cat generators. We don't have to do a sound barrier wall and spend $2 million like they're saying in that meeting. There's muffler systems you can put in there and stand on the other side of the generator and not be able to hear it. There's other solutions. We just need to get this study done so we can figure out what those solutions are and be able to live a better life right there in our community. So, yeah, the generators are being ran way too much for us as far as the speed in the neighborhood and doing some of the speed bumps or speed humps. It was personally affected me, and thank God no one's outside that night or anyone's kids that play in the neighborhood because it's a safe neighborhood. Someone came through one night and totaled, hit my truck, and totaled their car and another car sitting on the other side of the street. They weren't paying attention. So we got two cars totaled, and my car was, my truck was down for two months, and still nothing had done about the speed. We've come to the town police about it. We've done the speed studies and all this other stuff, and still nothing. No one wants to do anything about it. They just walk around on it. So we'd like to see something done about that also. That's my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Jared Horton. I live at 601 Electric Avenue. As many of you know, the Electric Peak Generation Station provides emergency power for the town, and it is crucial. I am pro-generation, but however, I however live 250 feet away from this. Like Joel was saying, it is extremely loud. I cannot have a conversation when it's running outside. It hurts everyone's ears, and I think just taking a look at Section 13-1 of the Culpeper Ordinance would like help get the gravity of the situation. According to the Section 13-1, in the Noise Control section, "Loud or repetitive noise, especially at night, can be detrimental to the health, welfare, safety, commerce, and quality of life to the inhabitants of the town. And it is in the public interest, such noises should be restricted. It is therefore the policy of the town to reduce noise in the community, especially in residential areas, and to prohibit noise disturbances from all sources." Also, in Section 13-5, it also states that activities sponsored by the municipality, state, county, United States, or any public entity are exempt from this actual thing. So I understand that like it is an emergency use facility to help with the peak demand, but please consider the health and well-being of the town and the residents when this actually is running. There are multiple different solutions you can have. You can do landscaping. You can do an exhaust muffler system. You can do a sound barrier wall. I actually contacted three different companies today: Net Inc., Residential Grade Plus. They're supposed to give me a quote about a silencer for a muffler. I contacted Sound Fighter Systems about a sound wall. None of this has to cost $2 million. I really think that maybe we should take a holistic approach, kind of see, like maybe trying one smaller for budget, work our way up, at least trying to do something for the citizens, especially that part of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Diana Bailey. I live at 608 Electric Avenue, and I don't have all the stats and everything else, but as a grandmother that has grandchildren that don't want to come to Grandma and Grandpa's house because it's too noisy, is heartbreaking. It just, it really does break my heart, and I don't feel like we should have to live like that, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
How you doing? My name is Sean Benton. I live at 618 Kingsbrook, right there on the corner of Electric. I'm just like the rest of my neighbors. It does get pretty loud, and so the ordinance states that basically you guys can run it, and it can be as loud as it wants to be. However, I don't think that the ordinance should really pertain to the fact that you're doing bodily harm to kids. If their hearing is getting degraded because of your running of your emergency things, I think that's pretty messed up. I think that if you sit there and you want to allow that to happen, then I think you're kind of messed up too. These kids, they just want to play outside, and the fact that nobody wants to do anything, not even get a study to see if there can be anything done, is kind of sad and disheartening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Dan Barnes, 605 Electric Avenue. I'm next to Joel and Jared there, about 300 feet from the generator. Not to reiterate some of the stats, but I do concur with the research that's been done. And regarding the city ordinance not pertaining to adhering to a noise, I think we can apply some common sense that if it's causing damage, and I myself, I work at home, and affects my ability to do my job and communicate with staff and coworkers, I'm trying to find a place in my residence where I can hide from the noise so they can actually hear me. So it does affect my ability to make a living as well, so just wanted to state, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Cody Blackman, 609 Electric Avenue. Same thing with everyone here. That noise has been an issue since day one, moving in many years ago, and something should be done. It's been going on for far too long. We have the means, we have a bunch of ideas, as you all have heard, and I think we should definitely get something done. Also, to tag along with the speed in our neighborhood, on our street, on Electric Avenue specifically, people like to use it as a drag strip, to say the least. We also have a school bus stop right there at the four-way stop that was recently put in, and that seems to not have done much at all. We've had police come through doing separate patrols, trying to catch those speeders with no luck. If we can put a speed table, speed up something along those lines, I think it'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Aaron Gresso, West Fairfax, Mulberry Greens neighborhood, 400 Greens Court. I am trying to figure out a way to get additional consideration for traffic control moderation at the intersection of Mulberry and Sunset. Sunset being the road that goes, well, by Walgreen and down into the new build for the houses that are down there. In that little stretch of road, there's Mulberry, which I use, but there's also a number of parking lot entrances, including, what do you call that? There's the businesses over there behind, well, by the hind Walgreen. There's the convalescence center. There's a couple of parking lots there, and there's the dentist's office. So there's a lot of entrances to that road. The road itself is a four-lane road. It has a double yellow line running down the middle of it, and it looks like it should be going 35 miles an hour, because that's what that road looks like. All right? So what does that mean? Well, since there's no posted speed limit sign on that stretch of road, I think there should be one. But in addition, there's some other odd things that happen. There's the ambulance entrance to the convalescence center, and the little ambulance entrance. I have seen more than once ambulances make a U-turn in the middle of the road when they pull out of it. Not necessarily great. In addition, there are people who don't have much else to do who live in that facility, and they, on occasion, have and will continue to do jaywalks across the street to get Walgreen. So it's a, it doesn't happen every minute of the day, but it is a traffic area that deserves additional consideration. What I would prefer to have is a 20 mile an hour speed limit, or less, to keep the speed down. The thing that got me was I was slowly pulling out, and some guy going 99 miles an hour from the apartment complex on the west end of the street, going really quickly split to make the stoplight down at Madison and Sunset there. There's no speed limit. What's the speed limit? Well, it's town, but is it really 25 when it's, it's supposed to be? You have a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign that's on the Sunset Lane part of a two-lane road that goes up towards the hospital, and it, it's there, but not on the little stretch of Sunset that goes in front of Mulberry Lane. Aaron Gresso, West Fairfax, please grant a slower speed limit there for additional considerations.
Thank you. Anyone else? Close the public forum at this time. All right. 8.01, Mr. Yell.
I move that council appoint Andrew Katuski to the Architectural Review Board for a four-year term expiring May the 31st, 2028, and I move that council reappoint Norman Nelson to the Culpeper Parking Authority for a new four-year term expiring May the 31st, 2028.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? Roll call? Oh, no, 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 no. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Two prayers tonight. 9.03 A1, Orders Amending Chapter 7, Erosion and Sediment Control. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a second reading of an update to the town's Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance. The state updated their regulations, and so this is a complete cleanup and overhaul of ours following a model that was presented to them to align with the state code. The other item involved here is that it removes the existing stormwater management ordinance, as that is not administered by the town. That's administered by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, and so it makes clear at that point as well. So the recommendation this evening is the council holds this second reading and adopts ordinance number 0-2024-004, amending Chapter 7 of the town code related to erosion and sediment control, and authorizes the mayor and town clerk to execute the document. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Motion to approve?
I move the R and R.
Second.
Any discussion?
I got a discussion point real quick. So on these, on this, on these changes, this is to get us in compliance with state law, correct?
Correct, yes.
Was there any additions we made, like a wish list, of things we added to this that were not part of the state?
We made, I think, one minor tweak for clarification specific to the town, but not, not anything that required anything above. I don't recall off the top of my head, unfortunately. For the vast majority, it's simply following the state code guidance.
Anyone else? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Remickus.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
And Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
9.03 A2, Orders Amending Chapter 4 of Virginia Property Maintenance Code of the Town of Culpeper, first reading. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had extensive conversations at the committee level over the past number of months related to the property maintenance code. What's been whittled down from it is essentially trying to find objective standards focused primarily on issues related to outbreaks of infestations, either rodents or pest infestations, as well as mold, and providing the town the ability to help remediate those situations if there are complaints. With that being the case, these are the sections of the Virginia Property Maintenance Code that are being considered for adoption. In Chapter 1, the entirety of that section, Sections 104, 105, 106, these are sections that are existing, ones that the town has adopted. We're looking to also adopt Chapter 2, which is the definitions, which is the general section, the general definitions. Chapter 3, Section 309, which is related to pest infestation and extermination. And finally, Chapter 7, in the absence of a fire marshal in town, this provides the town with the abilities to enforce fire safety standards. And so it would be Section 701, the general section. Section 702 means of egress. Section 703, fire resistance ratings. Section 704, fire protection systems. And Section 705, carbon monoxide alarms and detection. To provide some additional enforcement ability related to those mold outbreaks and the infestations, there are some partial sections that the town is looking to adopt as well. Under Chapter 3, general requirements for the exterior property areas, this is Section 302.2, related to grading and drainage. Subsection 302.5, related to rodent harbage. In Section 304, related to the exterior structure, subsection 304.5, the foundation walls. Subsection 304.6, exterior walls. Subsection 304.7, roofs and drainage. 304.13, windows, skylights, and door frames. 304.16, basement hatchways. 304.17, guards for basement windows. In Section 305, related to the interior structure, 305.1, which is a general section. 305.7, related to carbon monoxide alarms. And finally, Section 403, related to ventilation, natural or mechanical ventilation. So the recommendation is that council hold the first reading of this ordinance this evening with a second reading to follow at the July Town Council meeting. Be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Just to clarify, so the sections we are looking to implement specifically focus on preventing mold and pests and improving fire safety.
Correct.
Anyone else? John?
Who have been the stakeholders in developing these policy changes?
We held a public outreach meeting with a number of property holders, landlords. They expressed some significant concerns with a number of the sections. These were relayed back to the council committee, which resulted in the removal of a number of sections, particularly the removal of the rental inspection district section, which would have involved proactive inspections of rental units. And then there was further refinement to focus specifically on mold and infestation situations stemming from council and what they heard and the feedback that they had received in terms of the common complaints that are being received.
And what is going to be the cost to the town for the adoption of this? Because it seems like it's going to require more staff.
This will. This will certainly require one additional staff person. We've got, we provided an estimate in terms of staffing and benefits, along with potential legal costs that may go along with enforcement of this of approximately $120,000 per year.
Anyone else? Thank you, Andrew. 9.03 B1, Adoption and Resolution for VDOT Smart Scale. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have before us this evening four resolutions that we're looking for resolutions of support to submit smart scale applications. These are transportation projects that are fully funded by the state. There are four projects that the town is looking to submit. These came about following VDOT studies of the James Madison and Madison Road quarters, the Business 29 on the north end and the south end of town. They solicited public feedback on these suggestions, and ultimately, these were the four projects that were suggested. The first is a new roundabout at the intersection of Germana Highway, Madison Road, and Main Street. As you can see here, it would tie into the existing CVS there, along with those ones. It would also close the crossover that exists at the end of Southwest Street, so essentially they would need to go down to the light that exists at Blue Ridge in order to make the movement to head north there. The second project that is proposed is a roundabout at the intersection of Business 15 and Ira Hoffman. This is where the new tidal wave car wash has been installed. This, again, is one of the highest intersections from a crash perspective within the district, and so by putting the roundabout here, it relieves a lot of the pressures for the angle collisions that make up the majority of the incidents of that particular location. The third is another roundabout, and this is at the entrance to the Walmart facility at the Burger King. This facility would work in concert with the proposed R cut that is currently, has site plans submitted at the intersection of Nals Mill Road and Business 15, so vehicles making the right turn there would be able to go around the roundabout to head back into town, to make that movement more safely than at the existing traffic light that exists there.
Real quick, this one will get rid of the issues we have at Nals Mill? So this will, this will be a ride-in, ride-out only?
So Nals Mill essentially will be, will become, not strictly a ride-in, ride-out, but you won't be able to make the full movement across Nals Mill, and that's a separate project from this, but this works in concert by providing that opportunity for those coming into town along Nals Mill. They'll be obligated to make the right turn, essentially, with the R cut, so this will provide them the opportunity to go around the roundabout to head back into town. And that R cut was funded through a proffer from a rezoning in the county. The final project that we're looking to submit is for pedestrian comments, a shared-use path down the length of this corridor, starting at the roundabout at Main Street, providing that final crosswalk across the fourth leg of that, that it does involve the, an R cut at the intersection with Hendrick Street, but providing the path all the way along. You can see there is also a crosswalk across Business 15 in front of the Sleepy Hollow Motel, tying into the shopping center there. That's where we did unfortunately have a fatality in the not-too-distant pass, so providing that safe pedestrian accommodation there, we see as being very, very important. The shared-use path continues along, and it runs all the way down to Nals Mill Road, where it'll look to tie in with proposed shared-use paths associated with the roundabouts as well. So those are the four projects that we're looking to submit to VDOT, and so we are requesting this evening that council approve the resolutions of support for each of those. These are still a ways off from their final completion, and it is a competitive process, so we'll have to see if we're successful with the applications. Happy to answer any questions that council may have on any of these projects.
Go ahead.
Point of clarification, so these are projects that are being submitted to VDOT for grant funding, and what you're asking for us to do tonight is to show that we support them.
Correct.
Anyone else? Thank you, Andrew.
I move the R and R.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Remickus.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
And Mayor Reeves.
Aye. 9.03 C1, Orders Amending Chapter 24 of the Town Code related to water and sewer utilities. Second reading, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the proposed ordinance amendment includes the following changes. In Section 24-93, B and C, it provides clarifying usage, it clarifies the usage documents required for non-residential applicants for service, as well as clarifies who will determine whether any required system improvements that may be required based on providing service to that particular applicant for water and sewer services. Also, Section 24-93 D and E establishes the requirements for a water supply and discharge study for potential customers exceeding 100,000 gallons per day of usage or 3 million gallons per month of usage, with final approval by council, either approval or deny of the connection permit for this type of customer. And I'd like to point out, currently, the town does not have any customers that are this large in the town, and this would, again, be for new customers. Section 24-115 and 24-163 are also updated to reflect changes as required by the voluntary settlement agreement between the town and the county. And with that, the recommendation is that council hold the second reading and adopt ordinance number O, 2024-5, amending Chapter 24 of the town code. Article 3, water, and Article 4, sewer and sewage disposal, and authorize the mayor and town clerk to execute the documents. Be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Wait, okay, this essentially addresses the sort of high-volume water users, and I just want to go back to paragraph B, the section for application for service, tabbing of main. It's kind of generic there. It says, "For property owners requesting a non-residential connection, property owner will provide additional documentation estimating the instantaneous peak usage or discharge peak hour usage or discharge." And it sounds as though anybody that wants to open up, create or build a non-residential developed property, it could be plant, nursery, car wash, restaurant, I mean, would all those people, and these are basically- I mean, with all those people, and these are basically five-eighths or one-inch pipes, not normally used for the kind of volume that we're talking about. So we'll just require every applicant?
The intent is for any non-residential customer to provide that information. Obviously, if it's somebody that's small, like a restaurant, you know, we would work with them, and it would be negligible. It wouldn't have a significant impact. But there is, you know, definitely a gray area in where that falls as to where that becomes significant to the, to the, to the system, that it would become more important and, you know, and have more impact on the system.
Right. I was just thinking about, so your smaller, you know, business, trying to calculate peak monthly usage is not something that, I mean, it's like engineer work. So how do you?
Correct. I mean, the difficulty is, is, for example, take one of these data centers. If you actually look at what they use on an average, annual average basis, which is what our tap fee is based on, it actually is a very small number because they use that peak during, you know, only a few days throughout the year. So you could take that down to a, you know, a much smaller type of applicant as well and still have a significant impact on the system. Also, by gathering this information, if it is somebody that has those peaks, for one, if they have those peaks, they're going to know what those peaks are. And if they don't know what those peaks are, they should know what they are because it may require tankage on their part. The water system may not even be able to provide the water that they need. So, you know, we would rather them not figure that out after they get the connection fee and then find out that, that they don't have the adequate pressure and flow that they need based on that peak. But again, for the, for the small, you know, type operations or, you know, say, an office building, for example, you know, that's pretty easy to figure out. You know, it would be, a peak for that would be twenty percent more than their average. And, and that's all that discussion would be, is just force to have that discussion, make sure we know what, what we had. It's just, I don't know really how to draw a definitive line and catch the ones that we really need to, need to catch, which is why it is a little vague. But, but I, I don't really see it as an area that would be abused because there's, there's no really reason to, to do that. It's really just trying to, to get the service that they actually need for whatever business that they have.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question for the manager. What benefit do the citizens derive from providing water for non-residents? What is, what is the benefit to residents of our town?
I mean, I think that there's a lot of business that they receive by that. So, I mean, if, if we didn't provide water to non-resident, or, you talking to non-residents or non?
And just use this as an example, like for these non-residential uses.
For non-residential type of customers. So, I mean, you know, the non-residential customers are your, you know, your restaurants, your businesses where people have a place to work. All of those type of things has a benefit to the residents, whether it's a place to have a job, a place to eat, you know, you name it, there's a lot of benefits for them. What this is trying to address is to not create a burden on those existing residents is, is what the intended is, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
And Councilmember Remickus?
Aye.
Nine point oh three, D, Approval Amendment of Understanding Between Town of Culpeper Department, Police Department and Culpeper Sheriff Department. Nick.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On behalf of Chief Saddle, Culpeper Police Department, we would ask you to, to accept and approve the memorandum of understanding, which is a mutual aid agreement between the Culpeper Police Department and Culpeper County Sheriff's Office. The benefits of accepting this agreement are for both agencies benefit. But to, to explain how it would work is a mutual aid agreement is between the sheriff and the mayor through the council. It's allowed by the Code of Virginia, and it anticipates events or emergencies where a large-scale response would be needed. And that response or the benefit would be the use of manpower of both agencies. It would be the use of resources of both agencies. As, in instance, our drone team, accident reconstruction team, that would be useful to the county. Potentially events like the Culpeper rodeo, where the sheriff could, could enact a mutual aid agreement to ask for our resources out, out at the farm center there, the facilities. Any other event, the parades, you see already, the sheriff's office has concurrent jurisdiction within the town of Culpeper. But we, as police department members, are not allowed to go into the county without this mutual aid agreement. Unfortunately, it has been quite some time since the two agencies have had a mutual aid agreement. But under the, the current atmosphere that both agencies are working together, we strongly urge the, the council to accept the mutual aid agreement. We think it's a benefit not only to the members and citizens of the town, but the county as well.
Second.
Madam Clerk, I want to do a roll call on that.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short? Vice Mayor Yao? Councilmember Clancy? Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Remickus?
Aye.
And Councilmember Russell?
Ten point oh one, Town Manager Monthly Report. Any questions or comments? Anyone else? Anything else? John?
Can we, just to recap from the committee meeting we had last month, will, the, I think we had asked Director Stover to come back with some information on the generator, how many times it was running a report of some kind. Is that correct? Is that the next step in this process, if there is a process?
That is, that is correct. We have a discussion item. Actually, I was reviewing the, the slides today to bring that back to the committee at next month's committee meeting. And in addition, due to the cost of that, that sound study fell within a level that I could approve it. I went ahead and approved that to be awarded, I believe. They have, you have already awarded a, a PO for that work. Is that correct?
It's in process.
It's in process. But, and we'll be reporting all of that back to the committee.
All right, thank you.
So there is going to be a study. I just want to make everyone know that a study is going to be done. All right, anyone else? Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.